We ready ma'am clerk?
Yes, your honor.
Very good, we'll go ahead and call the East Peoria City Council, regular meeting in order please. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Mingus?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Mayor Call?
Here.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you, please rise for them, in case you remain, stand for the pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and every day that you give us. Heavenly Father, though we are many, we come before you as one people. We ask for your power and grace to heal divisions and mend wounds. We ask your guidance, patience, and understanding to help support one another. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes please.
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes of the regular meeting held on August 19, 2025. The minutes of the special meeting for a working session held on August 19, 2025 be approved as printed.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried. All right, this evening I do have three proclamations. First up, whereas in the aftermath of the terrorist attacks of September 11, 2001, the American people demonstrated that in times of hardship, the values that define us do not simply endure, they are stronger than ever. And whereas as a nation, we responded to unthinkable tragedy with an outpouring of service and goodwill. And whereas on that dark day, first responders rushed into a burning Pentagon and climbed the stairs of the smoking towers on the verge of collapse, while citizens risked their own health and safety to prevent further heartbreak and destruction. And whereas as Americans, we came together to help our country recover and rebuild. And on this day, we pay tribute to the selfless heroes and innocent victims of September 11, 2001. And we reaffirm the spirit of patriotism, service, and unity that we felt in the days and months that followed. And whereas we join in serving causes greater than ourselves and honoring those we lost, we are reminded of the ways that the victims of 9/11 live on. And the people they loved, the lives they touched, and the courageous acts they inspired. And whereas by a joint resolution approved December 18, 2001, the United States Congress designated September 11 of each year as Patriot Day. Now therefore, I John P. call Mayor of the City of East Peoria, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2025 as Patriot Day. And the City of East Peoria invite all citizens to participate in community service in honor of those our nation lost. To observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities, including remembrance services, and to observe a moment of silence beginning at 8:46 a.m. to honor the innocent victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks of September 11, 2001. We ask all businesses, schools, and agencies to display the flag of the United States at half-staff in honor of the individuals who lost their lives on September 11, 2001. May we never, never forget. All right, gentlemen, you're up next. We have with us the Knights of Columbus and we always look forward to doing this each year. Whereas the Knights of Columbus are dedicated to works of charity, unity, fraternity, and patriotism. And whereas intellectual disabilities affect one out of every 10 families in America. And whereas the Knights of Columbus are committed to enhancing the quality of life of people with intellectual and physical disabilities throughout the state of Illinois. And whereas the City of East Peoria recognizes all the voluntary services provided to the citizens of East Peoria. And whereas the Knights of Columbus raise funds and hand out Tootsie Rolls at local retailers on September 12 and 13. And whereas the money raised helps to significantly enhance the quality of life of people with disabilities. Now therefore, I John P. call Mayor of the City of East Peoria, do hereby proclaim September 12 through September 13 as Support Citizens with Intellectual Disabilities Tootsie Roll Drive in the City of East Peoria, and call upon citizens to recognize and support the Knights of Columbus in this most worthwhile and humanitarian effort for their 56th Annual Tootsie Roll Drive for children and adults with intellectual disabilities and their families. So gentlemen, I'd like to present this to you and then if you come up, well feel free, obviously say whatever you'd like to.
Good evening gentlemen and ladies, and I appreciate the proclamation. And I just brought along a list that we donate to, nine organizations. Robine District 85 Special Ed, East Peoria District 86 Special Ed, East Peoria High School District 309 Special Ed, Central Illinois Writing Therapy Gets Check, Children's Home Association Illinois, Special Education Associate of Peoria County SEPCO, Heart of Illinois Down Syndrome Association, Spec Program of the Diocese of Peoria, and SRAM Education Center of Pagan. And we had a great fundraiser last year, we made past our goal, and so we're hoping for the same thing this year. Everybody got a little bit more money last year, I hope we make the same thing this year, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate you guys, and feel free to come up and make the rounds, I think we each have something set out for you guys. But we appreciate all you guys do. All right. And while they come up collecting the money, we have one more proclamation, another very important one. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you, appreciate it, all right. You gentlemen, have a good evening. Yeah, thank you for all you do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, our dentist thanks you as well, yeah. All right, whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, this proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. To share a message of hope and healing, and to recognize that everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide. Whereas suicide affects people regardless of age, gender, or background. According to the CDC, suicide is the second leading cause of death for ages 10 to 34, with more than 49,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And the rate is one and a half times higher for veterans than for non-veteran adults over the age of 18. And whereas with each and every suicide directly impacting a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, service and community members, and social media connections, we can assume that everyone has been impacted by suicide. And whereas, East Peoria, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, firefighters, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas for people struggling with depression or suicidal thoughts, and for anyone who is concerned about a loved one or simply someone they know, help and support is available 24/7 via phone call, text, or chat from the 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline. Call or text 988 and be connected to a crisis center. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to check in with their family, friends, and neighbors on a regular basis and communicate their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I John P. call Mayor of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I think everybody can kind of understand the words of that proclamation, and we find it to be very important to share that message, and I know there are some of us that have been affected by that, so. Means a lot to these folks, and I hope people take this seriously, and I think this is something that I appreciate that we do on an annual basis. And suicide isn't, this isn't just something I think that's fitting for September. I know that's the month it's designated, but I think it's important that we take these words seriously each and every day, so. All right, public comment, anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item, please step forward. And I'm seeing no one. Commissioner Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a consent agenda consisting of items numbered 1 through 5. Item number 1, adoption of resolution number 2526-049, resolution to approve payment of the scheduled bills listed on schedule number 8 in the amount of $550,391.01. Item number 2, adoption of ordinance number 4866 on its second reading, an ordinance authorizing a special use for an accessory structure on property located at 900 Centennial Drive in the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois. Item number 3, adoption of resolution number 2526-046 on its second reading, resolution approving economic development loan to TPC of EPLLC from the City of East Peoria's Revolving Loan Fund. Item number 4, adoption of resolution number 2526-045 on its second reading, resolution approving additional funds for the 2025 Street Maintenance Program projects funded by General Funds for the City of East Peoria. Item number 5, adoption of resolution number 2526-044 on its second reading, resolution accepting proposal from Maur Stutz, Inc. for professional G.I.S. services for sewer inspection data integration project as listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Decker. Roll call.
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered 1 through 5 listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted, and the items numbered 2 through 5 haven't been read once by their title and haven't laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Mingus, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4867 heretofore attached, an ordinance authorizing a special use for short-term rental on property located at 221 East Sheen Avenue in the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, haven't been read once by its title and have laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Oh, thank you Commissioner Mingus. Dead heat.
Okay, caught me off guard, okay. This is the second reading, so we introduced this at the last meeting. Petitioner Alyssa Fairbanks is the, or the petitioner is asking for the short-term rental, and this one went through the Zoning Board of Appeals and came out from the Zoning Board of Appeals with a vote of 4-1 and recommendation for approval for the special use. Those, there were conditions, and these conditions are really consistent with the, what we've put on just about any other short-term rental, and those being not more than six guests permitted at one time, and that's usually restricted by the number of bedrooms, and all vehicles to be parked on the property, which again, that's a, was a reoccurring, recurring issue or concern by, not in this particular case, but generally all short-term rentals. Now, no outdoor activities after 10, and the house rules must be on file prior to opening. So with that being said, that's what's on the table on the second reading.
Very good, any discussion?
Mayor, I am going to support this, I did have one resident reach out and with some concerns, and concerns are valid. I think, I'm not convinced that it's any different than if a family were to live there, especially if they had multiple drivers in the family, so. That was the only negative comments that I've heard, so I am going to support it tonight.
Very good, any other discussion? All right, so I spoke to this young lady after the meeting, I did not support it on its first reading, and I'll be consistent by not supporting it tonight for the reasons I shared with her. Not personal in nature, but just concerns that some of the neighbors had, so I want to be respectful making that decision. Roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
No.
I have four ayes and one no, your honor.
Very good, motion carried, thank you.
Your honor, that's it for me tonight.
Very good, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Decker.
I have one item here. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4869 heretofore attached, an ordinance in relation to motor vehicle parking on designated state routes in the City of East Peoria be read at length by the clerk, and it said ordinance number 4868 be accepted on its first reading as read by its, I'm sorry, be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Mingus, we spoke too soon. We thought it was going to be a record meeting. Madam clerk?
Whereas the Illinois Department of Transportation requires local municipalities to enact an ordinance that specifically prohibits the parking of motor vehicles on designated state and federal routes in the City of East Peoria while improvements are being made in portions of these roadways and related traffic control equipment, and after such improvements are completed. And whereas the city currently does not allow parking on Main Street or the Cedar Street Extension, both being designated as state and federal routes in the city, but such, no parking areas are not specifically designated in the East Peoria City Code, whereas it is in the best interest to designate Main Street and Cedar, the Cedar Street Extension as no parking areas in the City of East Peoria as provided herein. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that Section 1, the findings and recitations here and above set forth are hereby adopted and found to be correct. Section 2, new part F, is hereby added to Section 11-5-7 and Title 11, Chapter 5 of the East Peoria City Code as follows. Section 11-5-6, parking prohibited in specified places and beyond specified time limits. F, it is unlawful for any person or operator to park a motor vehicle on any roadway in the city designated as Main Street or the Cedar Street Extension, which expressly includes a portions of Illinois State Route 8, Illinois State Route 29, Illinois State Route, Illinois Route 116, and US Route 24, or as such roadways may be re-designated from time to time by the state, Department of Transportation, or by the Federal Highway Administration that are situated along Main Street or the Cedar Street Extension. Section 3, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in patent form by the East Peoria City Clerk. As that clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section 4, this ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject, shall be construed therewith, excepting as to that part in direct conflict with any other ordinance. In the event of such conflict, provisions here shall govern. Section 5, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and 10-day period of publication in the manner provided by law.
Thank you Madam clerk.
Thank you Morgan. This, it's something that the city has enforced for quite a while, we didn't allow parking in these areas, they are federal and state routes, this is just making it official.
Yeah, I'd just like to touch on, this is a requirement by IDA, it's part of our agreement with them, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That's all I have this time, mayor.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Decker, Commissioner Sutherland.
I have nothing tonight, your honor.
Very good sir, Commissioner Mingus.
One item tonight, your honor, resolution 2526-048, be resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 2526-048, resolution approving purchase of gym equipment for the new police station from Pure Fitness Innovations be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number 2526-048 be accepted on its first reading as read by its title, be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Decker.
Thank you Commissioner Decker, this is exactly as it says, it's a resolution approving some gym equipment. Anybody who's been by the new police station can see that progress is being made, and as progress is being made on the construction, we're going, we have to start preparing for when it's done, and that is to purchase some gym equipment. Total cost is $43,332. Looks like we're going to pay that in three different installments, $14,161.
Very good, and I'd just like to point out, the reason why this is infernoist before the police station is done, we actually have this, we got a heck of a deal, this is actually coming from a Division 1, pretty top-notch college that renovated their fitness center, and we landed a good deal on this equipment, and it's currently in storage, so. We're going to bring it forward here as we're preparing to get the police station wrapped up, but we got an excellent deal on it, so. Just wanted to point that out, appreciate them for doing the work and finding this equipment, and. Yeah, normally it'd probably be about three times that cost, so. Any other discussion?
Just refresh, what's our target date on the completion?
I think they're still looking at July of next year is what they're shooting, they're making great progress. We've lucked out with the weather and everything else, it's just been, but I think July is the target, so. Probably be before this commercial space out here if I had a guess. Enough said, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mingus?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor Call?
Aye.
While presenting, your honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, your honor.
Thank you Commissioner, any public comments, anyone wish to address the council on non-agenda item? And I'm seeing none. Comments from the council, Commissioner Decker?
I have two items, mayor, and I did talk with the mayor about this prior to the meeting. I was surprised today, I'm just bringing this up just to notify the public that this is not something that the City of East Peoria has done, but I was driving home today, drove on Washington Street, right out in front of Mickey's Pizza, the turn lane that turns onto Meadows Avenue. Right there, as I was going onto that designated right turn lane, I happened to look up out of the corner of my eye and I see a red arrow, you know, stopping traffic. And I didn't think it was possible, I thought I was seeing things, so I called our Public Works Director Brett and asked him about it, and he said, no, that's what the state has done, it's put there to control traffic for the crosswalk that is there. It's supposed to only be there if somebody activates it. The problem is, it was on, and maybe that's just because it was installed today, or I think it was today.
Yeah.
But to me, it'd be very confusing, one, it's a designated right turn lane. We have a crosswalk out here, and I support that activated crosswalk. We have one out here with the flashing yellow lights and gets people's attention. I don't think this is going to get anybody's attention, especially when the green light for driving forward is green, allowing people to go, and all of a sudden it's confusing, we'll have a red turn arrow which will stop traffic backing them up onto Washington Street. So I say that just to notify the public that this was not a decision made by the City of East Peoria, and I think the reason behind it is valid. I think they should have gone with a different route though, so. It was not my choice. The second, and more positive, is cleanup week is coming. I just wanted to let everybody know that, it's the first full week in October, I think it's October 6 through the 10th is our target dates, obviously if we start to run behind, that happens from time to time. But as you prepare for it, the measurements are whatever can fit on like a 4x8 sheet of plywood, four feet high, is the maximum. We give our foreman the authority to refuse piles if it is too large. And I don't go behind them and approve piles after they've been denied, so. We put quite a bit of faith into our foreman to do their job, and they do a great job, so. We want everybody to stick within those parameters. Just for those that don't know, years ago, we had people that would abuse that, the cleanup week, which has gotten us to where we are now, so. Unfortunately, we can't just have it, you know, you put whatever you want out, we have to put parameters on it for that, but. October 6 through the 10th, I know everybody, a lot of people look forward to it each year, and just let you know, as you prepare to get close to that, don't put anything out toward the front yard if it's not cleanup week during that time, because we have people that travel through town looking for items that are out there, and I've heard of stories where bikes and things have been mistakenly picked up, or not, yes, picked up, and anyway, just want to let everybody know that. That's it, mayor, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I wanted to comment, this is really Commissioner Decker's area, but somebody was negatively commenting on the heat scarification, scarification process that was going on in Oakwood, and I travel that many times every day. And, and the person started complaining, really if they had known or asked, in like step one. You know, the first one is where they heat up the surface, they do whatever they do, they roll over it, and that is the first step, and then they come back with, again, a less popular second step, which is tar and chip, and then recently they've come back and removed the excess chip and put another layer of something that wasn't spun up on my vehicles, but the person was saying was, it was no good, and I can tell you from driving on it every day, many times a day, that that road has been improved, and I know from my conversations with Commissioner Decker, this was a couple things. The conversation with Commissioner Decker was, this was a maintenance, road maintenance approach. It was not, and should not be compared with a total mill and overlay, because it's not intended to be. But I can tell you, comparing the, this process, they had done camp and aisle 10, 15 years ago, and this, they've improved. The surface that is down there on Oakwood now definitely prolonged, and the conversation I had with Commissioner Decker before this was ever done was, doing this this year will give it added life until there's funds there to replace, because one, this is, if you know that road, very hilly, undulating up and down, and which adds to the cost, and it's pretty lengthy, it goes from Washington all the way up by Armstrong School, so. Hats off to the process improvement, and hopefully the people complain, they hold their complaints. It is much improved, because if, if you, again, most people may not recall, but it was dug up from the beginning of Washington, almost all the way up on a sewer project a few years ago, and it was patched then, and so this greatly did improve it, so. Hats off to the process and the crew that did that. And closing note, if you didn't make it out to the farmer's market, you missed out. Some vendors are already asking about next year, so. coordinator to take over my temporary job that I took, uh, five years ago.
Hey, you're doing a great job, so, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sutherland?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple few things here. I want to bounce in on Commissioner Decker, um, I have my own budget to do water and sewer the way this, this system is set up, and I don't think you can give the, the street department enough money to do what it's gotta do. I'm not a big fan of chip and tar and oil, and I, I, I'm much more of a mill it and redo the whole damn street person, but it takes money, so, I'm hoping we keep getting money in, and the bigger, the better, the better the job is gonna be. Um, I'm not a no-bail person if somebody gets arrested, I'm for a bail, of course. Um, this kind of hits close to me, because I, I own a couple businesses here in town, and when you get thieves like we have, I don't see how, uh, a lot of the big grocery stores and Walmart and those guys stay in business. A bail, back in the day, if I'm correct, and I'm sure I'll be corrected, uh, one way or the other, um, before this is over with, they would set the bail of how much you stole, because if you were found guilty, part of all that bail money not only would go to the state, but back to the person that you injured, um, one way or another. And I've been hit three times down at my store, and I used to get a phone call from the state's attorney's office saying, hey, listen, uh, uh, this is what we're gonna do, do you have a problem with this, uh, if they pay $50 a month for the next 20 years, is that good enough? And I haven't had a phone call, not, not one, about my three, uh, uh, events that's happened. Now, East Peoria Police Department's done their job, um, and I think the state, uh, state's attorney's office is doing their job, but I think that the, the no-bail, uh, system is really hurting Illinois businesses, it's just not about keeping, uh, somebody in jail where they can't provide for their, uh, their kids while they're in jail, which is kind of a hee-haw, um, reason, because a thief is a thief is a thief is a thief. Okay, next item. Um, I'm proud to say that, uh, the state of Illinois mowed at least half of Route 150, I saw, a few days ago, uh, driving home. That's all I can say. It's not much. Um, I've heard in the past, and I don't mean to open up a can of worms, but, uh, about the sewer bills in East Peoria, um, being so high, well, I, I was doing a little, uh, investigating about, uh, American Water took over Sundell Sewer up in Sunnyland, and I was, uh, talking to one of the owners of some property up there, and they said that American Water, in the past very few years, has tripled their cost for sewer, and it's up to $2.40 per unit, and I asked them, because I don't keep track of this stuff that well, I asked, what is East Peoria's, uh, cost per unit, and he said it's $0.86 per unit, and that includes the cap. So, I think that's, doesn't help out if you think your bill is high, but it does show you that anytime a city has control of its water and its sewer through, through their own municipality or through another municipality, you're light-years ahead of having that done privately, money-wise. I'm done.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mingus?
Just one real quick item, your honor, um, fire, fire department will have car seat checks, car seat installation tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 Central House for anybody who would be interested in either of those services.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner, and I have nothing further to add, so I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn until Tuesday evening, September 16th, 2025, at 6:00 P.M.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Decker.
I.
Hill.
I.
Mingus.
I.
Sutherland.
I.
Mayor call.
I.
While present, voting, your honor.
Thank you, we are adjourned until we meet again.